Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call White Marsh Township Board of Supervisors meeting of May 14th, 2020, 6:00 PM to order. And J.C., do you want to begin with the pledge?
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, liberty, and justice.
Thank you. We'll move over to announcements. And Fran, I know you have a few to read, but if we can start with Tom Blumstrom, our Director of Park and Rec, that would be great.
Hello?
Yeah, we can hear you talk.
Thank you. Thank you for having me this evening. I hope that everyone is faring well and safe and healthy during these extraordinary times. I've been asked this evening to give an update with our summer camp programs. So I'm very happy to be here this evening and let you know. I'm sure many folks have heard announced in the media that many summer programs, activities, and special events are being canceled throughout the county, region, and state due to the pandemic. Understandably, many folks in the township have questions of how that's going to affect our parks and recreation programs. As a result, and to best serve and communicate with our public in White Marsh Township, the Parks and Recreation Department has developed a landing page on the township website under Parks and Recreation titled "Summer Camp COVID-19 Updates." It's if you go to the township website, click on Parks and Recreation, there's a tab down the left-hand side that takes you directly to the page. The webpage will provide answers to some of the most common camp-related questions we have received thus far. It will include the most up-to-date information that our department has available, and we will continue to update it as developments occur. So participants are encouraged to check back periodically. The landing page went live today at 4:00 PM, and I did check, and it's up and working accordingly. At this time, our township's summer camp programs are currently running as scheduled. The team is diligently working to develop new processes and protocols aimed to maintain a safe and healthy camp environment, which is always going to be our top priority. Everything continues to be an extremely fluid situation, and our department is monitoring, abiding by all guidance provided by the governor, the county, the CDC, and the Department of Health, as well as professional recommendations by the NRPA and PRPS as is possible. Please note that these guidelines and recommendations are becoming clearer day by day, and we are trying to determine our best course for participant and employee safety. This may lead to the cancellation of camps and trips, delaying the beginning start dates of camps, reducing the participant attendance at camps, altering hours and camp structures from previous years, implementing new inclement weather policies, and requiring a variety of new safety protocols, of which we've all heard about many of them. In the event there are any relevant updates or changes to our 2020 summer camp plans moving forward, we'll be sure to communicate them to our website, Summer Camp COVID-19 Updates landing page as soon as possible, and we will send an e-blast to our participants of our programs.
Thanks, Tom. I know it's an ever-changing, evolving situation, and I know I've been contacted by neighbors and community people to know what's happening, because I know the camps are not just for fun for the kids, but often childcare. And, you know, it's a very stressful time, so I appreciate you taking the time tonight to come and share the latest, even if it's that we really don't know anything yet, but, you know, kind of where we are, so I appreciate you taking the time to do that. Does anybody have any questions? Were there any questions, Rick, that came in from the public or any Board of Supervisor questions for Tom?
No emails, no.
And Tom, before I let you go, I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to just publicly thank you and your team for all that you're doing every day to get these events out. I've had so many people comment, and I know you're getting national attention, which is wonderful, but it really is phenomenal, and I thank you. And please pass the thanks on down to your team.
We'll be happy to do that, and thank you very, very much for the kind words. And I echo your comments to the team, I know how hard they've worked, and also to the rest of the White Marsh team and family, and you folks and the residents for everybody hanging in there and working together to do our best in this crisis.
Yeah, I agree. Okay, moving on, Fran, do you have announcements ready?
Yes, thanks, Laura. So a reminder to all residents to please complete your 2020 census if you haven't already. To date, 62% of Montgomery County residents have replied, and 74.4% of White Marsh residents have replied. Congrats to White Marsh. If you have questions about the census, their call center is open from 7:00 AM to 2:00 AM daily. The number is 844-330-2020. A nice option for the upcoming primary is the mail-in ballot without questions. So the deadline for the mail-in ballot and absentee ballot applications is May 26th. To file an online application, visit www.votespa.com. You can also confirm your registration by contacting the Montgomery County Voter Services Officer at 610-278-3280. Great news, the Valley Green Bridge is open. Traffic is restricted to vehicles weighing less than three tons. There is also a seven-foot height restriction. Motorists should take note of the new traffic signage and vehicle barriers in that area. And again, the Park and Rec is at it again. They just pulled a rabbit out of their hat. This Friday night, join magician Ari Paul at 7:30 PM for an interactive blend of comedy and magic. Register at the Parks and Rec page on the township website. Be sure to check out the many other online programs while you're there. Thank you.
Thanks, Fran. Regarding the primary, a couple of things that I'll just kind of add. I got my mail-in or my mail-in applicant ballot today, and I had filed for the application, you know, gosh, over a month ago, so they are coming. Be patient. And for those that are wanting to go to a polling location, you know, the website, our township website does have the latest polling locations listed, which is from Montgomery County. So if there is any question about that, feel free to reach out to us, but you can reference our website for that. And I will also share, I think there's some other board members that went over the West Valley Green Bridge today. I was one of them, and you can't help but duck your head, even in your car, when you go there. It is low and huge. So be slow, take your time, be cautious, and for those pedestrians that are used to walking over the bridge, you know, just be careful, because now there will be vehicular traffic coming that way. But we can talk about that a little bit more later on. Any other announcements? We're good? Okay. So I'll go into the next part, which we don't have any public hearings tonight, so we'll go into the approval of our minutes for April 9th, 2020. Do I have a motion to adopt the meeting minutes from April 9th, 2020?
So moved.
So moved.
I'll take the second.
We both got them, Michael.
I think we got it covered. All right. Is there any board comment? Any public comments? No? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. As opposed? Ayes have it. So that carries. Thank you. Public discussion items. We're going to move down to ordinances. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-14, amending Chapter 111, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations of the Code of the Township of White Marsh, to establish three-way stop intersections at West Valley Green Road and Hunt Lane and West Valley Green Road and Creek Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Chair Nestor. This is actually part of the discussion with regards to the opening of the West Valley Green Bridge. And as part of the overall project, there was, and as anyone has driven over there, a lot of new signage and alerting motorists of the restrictions that are in place. Obviously, they are, as Chair Nestor mentioned, there is headache bars that are on either side of the bridge. They're at seven foot in height, so a normal car can get under, but if you have a ladder rack on top, a roof rack on top, that will be, that will not go over the bridge. The reason for this is because they need to, the county, this is a county bridge, needs to maintain the three-ton weight limit. And their biggest issue of why the bridge would continue to close is when heavier vehicles were going over the bridge, it was compromising the structural integrity of the bridge. Therefore, they felt the best way in order to eliminate having larger vehicles go over and to maintain the bridge being open was to have the headache bars and the height restriction. So there is a great deal of signage that went into this. We also partnered with the county and agreed to put in the stop signs that were mentioned in this ordinance. They were up and installed, yet to be ordained due to the COVID epidemic that's really kind of delayed that for us. So we're here tonight to ordain those stop signs so that they can be enforced. The idea with the stop signs is really safe, especially on that side of the bridge. You have a curve in the road, and then the road starts to decline, and you could have cars that really could pick up speed. Unlike some folks that remember the old headache bars, this, these headache bars will not move. They will severely damage your vehicle if you run into them at a high rate of speed. So we did not want to, in talking with the county about a lot of different options, it came through that putting in stop signs would at least slow motorists down, one from a speed standpoint, and two from a standpoint to see the barrier that is going to be in place in front of them. In this case, it is the headache bar. So these two, these stop signs will allow that, it'll create a safer chance for the motorists to slow down, to see the, to see the headache bar. If they have to turn around, they would then be able to turn around. So that is the reason behind that and why we are considering the ordinance this evening.
Thank you. Is there any board comment on this?
Just to clarify, those stop signs are temporary. They'll be there as long as the headache bars are there, but once the bridge gets replaced and those headache bars are removed, then stop signs also will be removed?
Well, I think that depends on what the final design is going to be, and, but any stop sign can be removed at any time. They're not, I wouldn't say called temporary, they're going to be ordained, but at any point, the board can also remove them, and then we would repeal the amendment to allow for the stop signs. So we're really not sure as to what the design is going to be, but if we say that the bridge is going to go back in the same spot and we don't need the headache bars, then we can have another ordinance amendment where we would remove those stop signs, and that would not, that would be at the board's discretion.
Great. That's helpful just to know and hear it said, you know, out loud, that it's something that is, you know, possible down the road, depending on what happens. Any other comments? Rick, do we have any public?
I did have one email public comment, if I could go over that with the board. That was from Joan Biddle on Henry Lane. Her concern had to do with, you know, why we didn't consider speed bumps instead of stop signs along there. And the answer, and I did respond to her, but I said that I would mention this publicly, the answer to that is we looked at, the county looked at, an array of possibilities in order to create a safe, safety for the motorists. Speed humps, when people ask us about speed humps, we use the PennDOT criteria to consider speed humps. In this area where there is, as I mentioned, there's a curve in the road, there's a decline in the road, it does not meet the warrants for any type of speed humps in that area. So I think out there, nothing is going to be perfect, considering the limitations that people who are familiar with driving over that bridge, there are some, you know, permanent barriers that are there that create some difficulties, but we think that in the additional new signage, flashing signage, things that's going to grab the motorists' attention, the stop signs as well, these will all help and hopefully minimize any kind of accidents that could occur there by alerting the motorists, slowing the motorists down. And it's the same thing, I know we're talking a lot about the one side of the bridge, it's the same on the other side, which could be access from Bethlehem Pike, that there is additional signage. There is also bars, plastic bars, that kind of give motorists an idea of how low the headache bar is in terms of the seven feet. So there is a lot of different things out there to just grab the motorists' attention, that there are these physical barriers that need to, you need to be mindful of when you're crossing the bridge.
Yeah. Agreed. Thanks, Rick. Any other public comments? Or board comments? Hearing none. Mr. Miller, please call a roll.
Okay, let's see if I can do this again correctly. Supervisor Cusker?
Yes.
Ms. Toll?
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel?
Yes.
Supervisor Drazner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Did I have that right?
You got it.
Yes.
Round of applause, all right.
Excellent. Well, that, that carries. That's great. Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance 2020-15, amending the vehicle and traffic provisions of the Code of Township of White Marsh to prohibit the use of the engine brake retarders, also known as Jake brakes, on Flower Town Road from Joshua Road to Butler Pike and on Joshua Road from Flower Town Road to Stenton Avenue pursuant to a study performed by PennDOT?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller?
Can I just make one clarification there? As an ordinance, it has to have an ordinance number, which is, I believe, 1,000? Ordinance 1000?
Oh.
Not a resolution.
What? I did the other one as 202014, too.
Sean, can we, Kilkenny, can we just change that ordinance to ordinance 999? Can she just make a motion to change that to ordinance 999?
Yeah, she wants to make a motion to do that, and someone, whoever seconded it, accepts that, then it's changed to 999.
Yes.
For the first one?
For the first one, correct. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yeah.
Okay, should I read the whole thing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 999, amending Chapter 111, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2, Traffic Regulations of the Code of the Township of White Marsh, to establish three-way stop intersections at West Valley Green Road and Hunt Lane and West Valley Green Road and Creek Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Do we need to vote on that again?
Yeah, just vote on it again.
Oh, boy.
Okay.
Got it, Rick?
Yeah, I got it. I got it. All right. Supervisor McCusker?
Yes.
Supervisor Toll?
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel?
Yes.
Supervisor Drazner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks for catching that. Sorry about that. So let's go on. Do I have a motion to adopt ordinance number 1,000, amending the vehicle and traffic provisions of the Code of the Township of White Marsh to prohibit the use of engine brake retarders, also known as Jake brakes, on Flower Town Road from Joshua Road to Butler Pike and on Joshua Road from Flower Town Road to Stenton Avenue pursuant to a study performed by PennDOT?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Chair Nestor. On this, this was, this was developed out of, we received, we're receiving some complaints about the noise of trucks going along the roadway on Flower Town Road and Joshua Road, and we, those two roads are both state roads. So we contacted PennDOT. PennDOT, if they would consider when the roadways having a Jake brake, which are, when the trucks are engaged in downshifting or in a motion of braking, you kind of hear that rumbling of noise, which can be very loud, especially as the plant, Highway Materials Plan is operating it sometimes in the evening hours for projects. So PennDOT went and they performed the study and determined that the restrictions could be placed on Flower Town Road between Butler Pike and Joshua Road and on Joshua Road between Stenton Avenue and Flower Town Road. PennDOT did indicate that the township would be responsible for installing the proper signage. They indicated those locations where the signage would be, as well as we would be in charge of enforcement. We had, this has been advertised, we have also, at the request of the board, we notified Highway Materials that this ordinance would be going in place. We received no comment back from them, but at this time, we have the ordinance and for the board's consideration, or passes, it will put up the, we will put up the signs. And what I just want to say is, similar to a stop sign, we don't catch everybody who is going through a stop sign. We certainly will have enforcement, gives us the ability to have enforcement, we'll be able to work with Highway Materials as they can start to put out some material, hopefully, that informs those that are using the plant that this restriction is in place. But, you know, again, if someone's using it, you know, and the police aren't there, we can't have somebody stationed on those roads 24 hours a day. But this does, be that as it may, this does give us the ability to, you know, as we enforce it, give people warnings to start, and enforcing it, those that use that plant become familiar with it and will not be using that device along those two stretches of roadway.
Thank you. Do we have any board comments? Any public comments? I'm still trying to learn the appropriate wait time in virtual world. Okay. I think we are good. Thank you for that. Mr. Miller, please call the roll.
Supervisor McCusker?
Yes.
Supervisor Toll?
Yes.
Supervisor Manuel?
Yes.
Supervisor Drazner?
Yes.
Chair Nestor?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so we are moving down to motions. Do I have a motion to approve the non-uniformed pension plan engagement with Nationwide for the township's defined contribution and deferred compensation plans?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chair Nestor. This is something that we have been looking at since the beginning of the year. Recall that the board last year engaged the services of Mike Courtney and his group from RBC to be the plan fiduciary for the non-uniformed pension plan, as an advocate for the plan, to review the plan, the plan's performance, the cost of the plan. Myself, Mike, as well as Nate Crittinen, our finance director, have been examining this over the past few months, and we are at a point now where we are recommending a change. As far as the reasons behind this, the ICMA RC, who currently provides the townships' 401A and 457 plans, which are the township's defined contribution and deferred compensation plans, they had a new financial manager take over the account a few years ago, and we have really struggled, and the employees have struggled to receive consistent and responsive service from that plan manager. He has a large territory, I think that is quite frankly overstretched, and we're just not getting what I think our employees deserve. Also, we wanted to look at the pricing, due to the years in the organization that I've been here, that has not been something that is typically looked at, more so you're looking at the police pension, but you're, people tend not to pay attention to the non-uniformed pension. And those plan, those plan costs are paid for by the township. So service costs, those were really the two contributing factors that we went and we looked at, several other options. We went back to ICMA RC. Their price for their compensation was at 15 basis points, which is the interest rate based on the amount of money in the fund. And in talking with Mike Courtney, he said that is extremely high when compared to others in the pension plan market. We actually even went back to RC and asked them to provide us better pricing, and they came back to 6.5 basis points. We went out and we looked at, Mike went out and looked at two other companies, one being Nationwide and one being Lincoln. Came back Nationwide, gave us the most competitive pricing. In my memo, I said three basis points. That was actually the old amount. It's down to all-in at two basis points at this point. Nate and I and Mike met with Nationwide. We were very impressed, one with the funds that they offer, much more in line with funds that most people are used to seeing in their accounts, Vanguard, T-Row Price, et cetera, which always have very competitive costs that go along with them, as well as very good returns in their funds. Also, with regards to customer service, Mike and Nationwide, they would put together an annual plan that would provide for annual meetings on which the employees could attend. They would discuss retirement topics, certainly topics based on the demographics of the employees that are here, and they would also go over trends, keeping us up to date of what that are here, and they would also go over trends, keeping us up to date of what is going on in the marketplace. They would also then conduct individual meetings with employees. They would be available for calls at any time to go over questions that any employee in the plan would have, make recommendations, go over performance, really no different than what is provided to the police and the police pension plan. But ICMS RC has really, in my estimation, has failed to provide that to the non-uniformed employees. Also, in moving, moving over to Nationwide, there is an entire orientation process that takes place, opportunity to familiarize the employees with Nationwide, their funds, their web-based tools. There's no money that's being lost. It's literally just a different name on the account and different people that you would contact. We've discussed the timeline for implementation. That would probably be in the later part of the summer. The thought is, maybe we might be able to do these in person with small groups, depending on where we are in the state. If not, they would be able to hold virtual webinars with our employees. We had the agreements reviewed by the solicitor's office. They found them to be acceptable, and certainly would appreciate the board's consideration in allowing us to move to Nationwide, which we feel is a quality pension fund manager for the non-uniformed pension plans.
Thank you, and I appreciate you spearheading and initiating this. You know, certainly it's a cost savings, which is fantastic to have for the township, but I also appreciate the idea of a better cost service product for our, you know, employees. So I thank you, Rick, for looking into this and starting that. Are there any board comments? Any questions? Any public comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Have it?
Thank you. It's important.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Moving on. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a fence at 2 Katherine Lane?
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Guttenplan, who we're going to try and share our screen here so that the board and the public can see what Charlie is talking about.
Good evening. These, several certificates of appropriateness are actually left over from the HARB meeting on March 11th. The first two have to do with a fence. You may recall, back in February, you approved certificates of appropriateness for a fence that spanned four different properties. There are now two additional properties that have requested the same fence to extend in either direction. The first is on lot number two, Katherine Lane, that you see here. Four, six, eight, and 10 were the ones that were previously approved. So this is just a blow up showing the fence is going along the rear property line, and this is the other lot that is asking for an extension of the fence in the other direction at lot number 12. So we'll, we'll end up with, after these are installed, there will be six properties with the same six-foot shadow box fence behind the rear property line. Again, rear property line is highlighted, and you may recall this picture from February. This is the fence that is being installed. Again, HARB reviewed these on March 11th, and they recommended approval of both certificates of appropriateness unanimously.
And is this what we have coming up for 12 and 15? Or no, 12 as well?
Um. This 12, yes. This was, this second one was 12. I'm sorry. I combined them. I apologize. They're on one, they're on one string here. We started out with two, and then we moved to 12. This, I really covered two and 12 together here.
Well, that's helpful. That's fine. And the fence is the same, you said?
Fence is the same, and it's the same as what is on four, six, eight, and 10 that we approved several months ago.
Excellent. Do we have any board comment?
Nothing of substance. I would point out that Chris Donati, who's at, I think, is it 15? Is, is on the call. Is this part of, for his property, too, Charlie? Or is that just from the porch?
This property is coming up next for patio.
Gotcha. Okay.
Okay, any public comments? Related to 2 Kath, or, yeah, 2 Katherine Lane? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. This one will be quick, because Charlie has talked about it already. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a fence at 12 Katherine Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Comments, Charlie or board? A dog comment?
That was Tyler. He apologized.
He likes the fence? Okay, hearing none, and any, no public comments came in, I don't think. I didn't see any. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
And I think this one is what you were referencing, Mike. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation patio and wall at 15 Katherine Lane?
So moved. Second.
Excellent. Mr. Guttenplan?
Thank you. This is also similar to previous applications that you have approved in the last few months. This is at 15 Katherine Lane, as you can see on the other side of the street. And this is for a paver patio and sitting wall to the rear of the property, actually not visible from the road. This sketch shows where the patio is going, its setbacks, and you can see in this right-hand corner, there's going to be a sitting wall. This is similar to the others in that they are being built out of pavers, similar, EP Henry.
Lost them. Can't hear them.
F8, Charlie. He's not looking. Hold on one second.
Charlie, we can't hear you.
We're still here, folks. We're just trying to get Charlie back up so we can hear him.
I think I have resolved that. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Um, Rick will be familiar with this. This happens in our staff meetings, too. I didn't touch anything, but it happens. And I apologize. But in any event, all I was saying is, this is going to be gray paver stones, EP Henry pavers, similar to all the others. And again, HARB reviewed it at the March meeting and unanimously recommended approval. It's actually almost identical to one or two that were previously approved by the board with the same contractor building it.
Great. Michael, do you have any comments?
No, I just, as I mentioned before, I knew Chris was on, and I was looking forward to us hopefully passing, you know, this request, the certificate of appropriateness.
Excellent. Are there any other board comments? Any public comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Moving on. Make sure I'm on track here. Do I have a motion to approve expenditures totaling $1,152,661.86 and payroll totaling $631,169.90 and pension paid costs totaling $7,577.52 for April 2020?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Miller, any?
No.
Comments?
No comments.
No comments. Any board comments? Any public comments? Hearing and seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda?
So moved.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Do I have a motion to approve the certificate of appropriateness for the installation of a patio at 4 Katherine Lane?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Guttenplan, back to you.
Thank you. This is an application that HARB reviewed yesterday, the 13th of May, at its first Zoom meeting. And it is a, again, a paver patio at 4 Katherine Lane. Four is one of the ones that you previously, a couple of months ago, approved the fence for. What the proposal is, is a, essentially a very simple rectangular patio at the back of the home, also in gray tones of pavers. And this is a photograph of what it will look like. Color, I can't guarantee, but they are in shades of pewter and gray, and there will be stairs and a railing like this from the house. The patio will be at ground level, and it'll be a simple rectangular patio. There's no sitting wall on this particular patio, and it's to be installed by the homeowner. And again, HARB, through a Zoom meeting yesterday, unanimously recommended approval.
Wonderful. Is there, are there any other board comments? Any public comments? Hearing and seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you for adding this. I appreciate it, and I'm sure the applicant will.
Oh, our pleasure, and I'm glad that some of these projects can begin happening now. I know everybody's in such a holding pattern for so much. It's nice to see some things beginning to happen. So this is our public comment period?
Just, just for the record, I mentioned the one public comment I received via email. That was the only public comment I received via email for this meeting.
Okay. And I don't see any chat comments or anything right now. Okay. We'll move into board member comments.
I'd just like to say, real fast, I'd just like to say thank you to our emergency service workers, our essential employees and healthcare workers, doing a great job. And the amount of unity that you're seeing within Whitmarsh now is totally incredible. So I just want to thank everybody who's pitched in to help each other out. So it's still, you know, still a ways to go, of course, but it seems like everybody's doing what they can to make our community great. So thanks.
And Fran, I'll build on what you just said. There is, you know, our community is great, and that's from the township staff to our residents, all together, and our neighboring municipalities. And, you know, like I had mentioned at last week's public department meeting, I want to reiterate that, you know, for my, I speak for myself from the heart, but also, hopefully on the behalf of the rest of the board and our staff, that we really do value all of our residents and their insight and their comments. And, you know, we may not always agree. Sometimes we may agree to disagree, but that feeling of respect should always be conveyed, and, you know, that's how, I believe, our board functions and our, and our, our team together. We're working together as a team. I just want to take a moment to reiterate that, and thank everybody for all that they're doing. Rick and Sean, I know you guys have been spearheading so much at the township building to make sure that our staff are getting in the groove when the public is allowed to return. You guys are going to be a well-oiled machine with how to handle the residents coming in and having everybody feel safe, you know, respected, safe. And so I appreciate and thank you for the time that you're taking to do that. And who would think that here we are in May, still doing Zoom meetings? But we're figuring it out and, you know, going with the ever-changing flow.
Thank you.
Anybody have any other comments? Okay, I'd like to announce that we did have an executive session tonight where we talked about litigation and real estate. All right. And on that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Take care, everybody. Have a great night, great weekend.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Take care.